Turn on my, can you hear me? Common Council Work Session Meeting of November 5th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Langenfelder?
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Waite?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. Mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. The first order of business this evening, or topic of discussion I should say, is foreign trade zone. Mr. Kellogg, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Foreign trade zones, everything you ever wanted to know but were afraid to ask, okay? Actually, we're going to give you a general overview of foreign trade zones. Bennett and I met with a number of consultants, mainly by telephone and by email, and also we had quite a conference call with Denise Chiazi, who heads up the largest FTZ in the state of Arizona for the city of Phoenix. So with that, we were able to put together some informational pieces for you this evening, and I'm going to let Bennett proceed on that, and at the end, we have some conclusions and maybe some guidance. Thank you. Bennett, all yours.
Okay, so just going to jump right into this. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for bringing this topic up. I think it's very important discussion to be had, so we'll go ahead and jump into this. Foreign trade zones, so they are designated secure areas considered outside the U.S. Customs territory. And goods that are received into the foreign trade zones are generally subject to, not subject to duties or tariffs until or if they enter the U.S. Commerce for actual or consumption of those products. So some of the advantages of these, having a foreign trade zone within your industrial park or community would be that duties are paid only when the goods enter the U.S. Customs territory. And some merchandise may even be exported out of the U.S. duty-free. So these are some tax savings to companies that are located in these and also signed up to take advantage of the zones. Duty reduction, manufacturers may pay the lower duty rate applicable to either component materials or merchandise products. Duty elimination, duties are eliminated on merchandise that is obsolete, damaged, or destroyed, defective, scraped, or wasted. Whereas when you're not one of those zones, you are still charged on those. Weekly entry savings, reduce costs, fees, delect delivery, this minimizes delays, you know, efficiencies. And then there's the property tax reduction as a possible option. And I put an asterisk by this because in order to get the property tax reduction, you have to have other entities such as school districts, community college, those other fire districts, those other taxing districts need to sign off in order to get that part of the reduction. So you can still go into a zone without those, which a lot of companies do, because sometimes that's the harder component, to get those taxing districts to sign off on them. So who can benefit from foreign trade zones? Manufacturers, we see a lot of warehouse distribution companies that benefit from them. A company down in Mesa, or not Mesa, but Casa Grande, that located there a few years ago is Tractor Supply Warehouse Distribution Center. One of the components that they did, and that community set up to actually, as part of bringing them in, was to set up a foreign trade zone. They didn't have it in prior to, but when they went through the process of submitting for that project, the community said that they'd be able to go and get that. And they, I believe they got a sub-zone through the foreign trade zone 75. And other companies are third-party logistics and service providers. So want to go into the usage at the national level when it comes to foreign trade zones. Our latest numbers are 2017, so they looked at, there were about 191 active foreign trade zones throughout the nation. It was a total of 329 active production operations within those zones. Over 450 persons were employed, and over 3,200 firms that use the foreign trade zone during the year. Value of shipments into those zones totaled about 669 billion. Warehouse distribution operations received about 259 billion. So in our area, we have certain targeted industries that we look at. Transportation, distribution is one of those industries, manufacturing as well. So when we do look at the zones, those numbers are important when it comes to whether or not it's going to apply to us in the future. You look at production manufacturing operations received over 410 billion. Some of the largest industries accounted for in the zones were oil refinery, automotive, electronics, pharmaceutical, machinery and equipment, and export shipments to foreign countries from facilities operating in the foreign trade zones amounted to about $87 billion. We're going to look at usage in Arizona, so we're going to break down in the state. We received about $10 to $25 million in merchandise. Exports were about $250 to $500 million, and total shipments, $10 million to $25 million. Total employees within companies that operate in the foreign trade zones were about, from 16,000 to 17,000. The companies that most used zones in Arizona was aircraft, spacecraft, consumer products, chemicals, electrical machinery, other electronics and other. So I would, distribution logistics is going to be under the 2%. So in Kingman and at the industrial park, there are two options that we could look at. One of those would be potential of a sub-zone. So there are seven existing zones in Arizona that we could become a sub-zone to potentially. And alternatively, a new foreign trade zone at the Kingman Industrial Park using the Port of Los Angeles through Nevada. It was found out that we would be subject to Arizona customs, but could use the, or Arizona laws, but could use customs for foreign trade zones that can cross state lines through Nevada because of our proximity at that location to that state line. So these are the miles and the distance. It's very important when it comes to setting up sub-zones. There are limits as how many miles away from an existing zone that you can do when it comes to setting up a sub-zone. And so the current zones, the largest zone is FTZ Zone in Phoenix, we're 195 miles from that. Mesa, Western Maricopa, Nogales, Sierra, Hema County, Greater Yuma. We have seven zones currently in operation in Arizona. Some of the fees that are applicable to the foreign trade zone 75, they charge a $10,000 application fee and an annual $8,000 fee. So when we looked at the operation in Casa Grande, that's what they were paying for to be part of their zone through the FTC 75 when talking to Denise. And then you just see the breakdown of the other fees, which are further zones out, not necessarily ones that would probably be as applicable. In each case, you know, these are estimates, so to determine whether or not the fees would be charged to us, we'd have to look into that more. One of the kickers, we just looked at the large 194, or whatever it was back here, there was 195 to Phoenix. So we have to be within 60 miles or 90 miles, or 90 minutes drive time to the parameter. And so I think it's kicking us more towards the Nevada option versus that distance to the Phoenix and getting the customs to be able to service our area based upon those distances and what they will do. We looked at the most southerly area, we are about 90 minutes away from this corner of this township. It's a residential neighborhood in Henderson, Nevada, near intersection Interstate 11 and Interstate 215. We believe that there's a lot more work to look into these zones, and that's why staff is going to, we would look to do a white paper and reach out to a consultant. One of those consultants that we talked with was a company by the name of Foreign Trade Zone Solutions LLC. And we asked them if they would be able to work with us to really take a look at our area and determine what would be the best approach if Kingman were to entertain or look into getting a foreign trade zone. And so they came back and they said it's something that they could work within our budget for. They would look at the feasibility of designated Kingman as a sub-zone of one of the Phoenix foreign trade zones, whether or not that is applicable and whether we can do that. They would also look at the feasibility for Kingman as a new foreign trade zone using the Port of Las Vegas, Nevada, which was that other option that we discussed, the second option. And then they would look at recommendations of a plan to implement that foreign trade zone and the procedures within the Kingman Industrial Park. We put together a timeline for that implementation, as well as a budget, what that would cost the city or any entity that is setting up that foreign trade zone. And we want to include the annual, you know, budget. What is the manpower operating that foreign trade zone, the ongoing operations? The report would also include managing day-to-day operations, providing a foreign trade zone as a turnkey operation, whether they would help us to implement that, or whether we would take that on as a city, hire staff, go through that process, and then to retain and grow the businesses here in Kingman. So it would provide a path forward for implementing the foreign trade zones, include the proposal to assist us, address and offer solutions. We'd look at prior challenges, why haven't we set up a foreign trade zone? Because there are some challenges there. And so this document would include that. The report would be the property of Kingman, so like I said, we could implement it on our own or use a consultant to help us implement the project. So with that, you know, that's kind of an overview, and we'd like to continue the discussion and, like we said, work with the consultant to bring back more possibilities, more options. Any questions?
I have, I have a comment. A number of years ago, a subcommittee of the Kingman Manufacturing, Kingman and Mojave Manufacturing Association was established to look into foreign trade zones. And a paper, a draft paper, was written. It exists. And there was a lot of work by the subcommittee, and I think that that must be, you know, asked for, requested from them, because I'm sure that Ms. Hanson still has that report. Because at that time, the limitations that you've described, like the 100-mile radius, that was a barrier to entry. There's also requirements for import and export by a single entity, and those were constraints that, really, there was even a survey of the different sectors in Mojave County to see if there was, see what kind of critical mass there was in each of these sectors or the possibility that we had this import-export capacity. So there's some good nuggets of research in that paper, and I would really suggest that that be acquired if you haven't, perhaps haven't gotten it already. And I do remember that being so far from Phoenix was an issue, and Las Vegas seemed to be a more likely scenario, maybe requiring a waiver from the federal officials. But that was an interesting discussion then, it still is, and I think, I'm certainly interested in moving forward. It's just, let's use the good work that was done there, too.
And I was part of some of those discussions and those meetings with John Hanson at the time, and we met with the supervisor of Mojave County and around that table. If that document is and John has it, we will request it.
Yeah.
I had talked with John about this. One of the other things that we're doing is we're surveying all the businesses out at the industrial park to see who does have imports, where, you know, so we have, what is our current potential?
Right.
You know, so that's going to be part of it. You know, but I think more of it is probably a future potential from some of the information that we're getting back. At the time, we were discussing it with Denise with the foreign trade zone 75, and in looking at some of the documentation, there were some obstacles that Laren at the time, they did fill out paperwork to proceed with some stuff, and they ran into some obstacles. But if there's a paper out there that was completed-
There is a paper. If he doesn't have it, I'm not sure where it would be, but hopefully he did keep it-
See if we can track that down.
Yeah. It was never finalized, that may be why he isn't producing it, but it was compiling all the information that, as people had reached out in different areas, you know, that was in there.
Definitely.
But I think that it is a good idea to see the information that we have now and where the industries think they're going, to see what the capacity for this is. Because in due course, I don't know what that means exactly in time, but this is something that would benefit Mojave County and Kingman.
Mayor, you're absolutely right. It's both a complicated, and a couple of things that even changed since that paper was, since that work was done, is there is a group that votes on the FTZs, and they have really taken a hard line on specs, meaning that we would say we're going to put in a zone, and they, we think there now is a requirement, maybe it can be waived, but you must have a company within a certain number of months who actually works that zone. And so that's come into play. And the other thing, it sort of figures, customs role has stepped up tremendously. So our big negotiating thing would probably wind up being the customs, whether it comes out of Vegas and how that would work. So we estimate that it would probably run us about anywhere around $5,000 to $6,000 to do another comprehensive study with the updated restrictions and requirements on that right now. So, and one of the things, too, that really did play a big role, that if a company is interested, as Bennett said earlier, in the taxing advantage, is Denise down in Phoenix had told us it becomes very complicated, where you may have 15, 20, or 30 different taxing districts. And if one of those taxing districts says no, it's no for everything. And then you must negotiate with that taxing district on your own as a company to offset those losses in property taxes. So those are things that we need to better understand and work through. So that's probably why we need to really start peeling this onion back if we're going to get a good, clear picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we talk about the industrial park, is the, are the businesses on the airport side, are they included in this zone? So if they're on the other side of the fence and they're on the airport, but they, you know, we have some business there and we have some property that we hope to bring new businesses into, would they be included in this?
Yeah, the whole park would be included.
The whole thing?
Yeah. Really what comes into play, too, is the amount of money that is, the thresholds you have to meet, some of them may not even. So those are the things that we want to certainly better understand, so.
Area would be selected as a zone, that's what our application would use.
Okay. A lot of times we talk about, there's an industrial park and then there's an airport, as though they're separate, and so I just wanted to make sure-
I don't make any differentiations.
Okay.
Whatever we want to include.
Okay. Right. With adding in the additional, the Phase 2, and trying to bring in more aviation-type businesses, if we did have the trade zone, it might help us to bring in a larger company, corporation, so that's why I ask.
Yeah, I think a big number of craft, these craft 51, that is the-
Yep. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you, Gary, and thank you, Bennett. This was a great, very data-rich presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. You know, just this, in my mind, this just builds upon all the good work that we've done in the last three years at the airport and the industrial park. And from a policy position, you know, I would really hope that we would continue to build on that, that we would strive to be within like the top 10% of all the industrial parks operating in the state of Arizona. And when you benchmark, you know, there's nine zones in Arizona right now, is that correct?
Seven.
Seven or nine? Seven. Okay, well, there was one, I saw, I guess I counted three numbers instead of just one, sorry about that. So seven zones. But I think if you were to benchmark all of the parks that are in Arizona operating, I think that this would be one of the things that comes up. I noticed that Mesa has a foreign trade zone, and that's where they're doing that skybridge. You know, this is a part of that whole skybridge thing, where they're doing foreign trade zone, they're doing onsite customs processing, and as we've discussed before, you know, the future of Kingman could really be, if you look at that model, we could even do a better job, I think, with that skybridge model at Kingman, just because of our geography and we're not landlocked like they are, we have so much room to grow. And just looking at the direction that all of our target industries are going, you know, this really plays to our strengths, really, and just being another tool. Just keep adding those tools for economic development to make us more and more competitive, and one day we'll be in that top 10% of all the parks that are operating in Arizona. My only question would be, what is the timeframe of this white paper? I think it's a good idea to get somebody that's really an expert in foreign trade zones involved, and hopefully it would be done before we go into the next budget session, so we could maybe program that in if we need to, something.
I think we hit that pretty close. All the consultants that we talked to and working with Denise in Phoenix, that they would be able to, the biggest question that came into play, and Bennett and I heard it at two conferences now, and that is that new ruling on spec, and that is, you know, that company that would step up before that spec would expire, because they're really getting fussy about that.
Right.
Taking on a zone for the sake of a zone.
Right.
But again, those are things that a consultant could help us with or maybe around that option.
Yeah. Well, I really applaud you guys for doing what you're doing. I mean, we, economic development is war. You're competing against so many other places, and if you're not, you know, pushing forward and adding more tools the whole time, then, you know, there's other people that are calling up our companies and saying, hey, come over here, come over here, we have this, they don't have this. So we have to keep adding the tools to make us more and more competitive, so for retention and all of that. Thank you.
I think it would relatively, I think-
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Just one question really quick. This is great information. Can we make this available to the public? Put it on the website or something?
Yeah, and, yeah, we can. And it's actually been in the backup and-
Okay.
Or Facebook.
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
I know. There's a guilty party right there. It's good stuff, though. A lot of information, unless you go and get it.
Well, like you said, these are very complex zones to establish. That's what I took, that was my takeaway from working on that subcommittee. And so I totally agree that we need the expertise to work with us, especially with their new requirements. But it is, I think it is doable when we can hit those marks that are established for the import-export and the distance and all of these things. So I'm really excited about looking at this.
That's the one rule where the devil is in the deep.
It truly is in the details, and I, the deeper we got into the discussion, the more I realized that, you know, an expert would be really good, a consulting expert, yeah.
On that basis, we'll move forward.
Yes. Councilwoman Staley?
Yeah, I just want to add that as this moves forward, if worst-case scenario, we find that we haven't hit those marks yet, but maybe, you know, the next company that comes in would get us there. I'd really like to see the city have sort of everything in place, so we've got a pin in it and then we're able to implement it. And that really might make the difference in a company coming here or not. And so maybe that's something that we can put on the website, that we're, you know, that it's, we're in the process or that we're ready to go, you know, as soon as we do meet all those requirements. I think that's really important, that we can show that we've already done the late work and we're ready.
I agree. I look at this as a map. To get there next year, five years, but what is the map? So it's something that, this other documents out there, take that, but this is, that discussion is a map of potential trade zone.
I think it's been well-established by the manufacturers at the park that they understand that this would be a great asset to our community and to their operations potentially, and so it is well worth our continuing the effort.
That's why I was serving right off the bat.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Oh, certainly, Councilor.
Bennett, I know with G-Plat out there and there's some exemptions and stuff, but what is, really, could that be potentially not good for the fire district and the school districts and stuff, not collection for them?
Yeah, I mean, that's where you get into the potential, but they don't have to. There's still these other benefits.
Mm-hmm.
We looked at this. The property tax reduction is just one part, and a lot of the companies, they don't end up doing that. But they can be taken on a case-by-case basis. If a company comes in and they really want to take advantage of that, from what I understand, they go through the process and talk with those taxing entities, and they get that support and they get the letter, and then they bring it back. If they don't get that, then, and they still want to move it forward, they would do it under the other penalty. So the taxing districts at that time would decide whether it's going to affect them to the point, or whether the jobs are important. If a company comes in and says, we're going to bring 300 jobs, but we want this as a component, everybody's going to have to get together and have that discussion, do we want the 300 jobs or come with it or without it?
At that point, it would be sort of a choice of, you know, are you going to do a reduction on property taxes for one business and collect the property taxes on 300 homes, right? It's just a trade-off.
And they would also have to qualify under those imports and exports, so it's not every business out there. Very, you know, in our survey back, again, a few of them do currently, but do they have the volume to take advantage because of the cost of the program? So all that's going to get ironed out.
Ah, well, this will, this will be a new paper, but this will be, this will be totally updated and with our new, you know, the new environment that is at the park, so it's a good thing. But I do agree, we need, any information that has been gathered and analyzed is worth throwing into the mix.
Everything that I have, I already send, try and take a look at.
Yeah.
All those email communications I work with, communications back and forth between John and the FTZ, all been given to start looking at it.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you both. It's a great discussion. Our next, our next topic is going to be traffic calming. Mr. Plante?
Evening, Mayor, Councilor. How are we doing tonight?
Very well.
All right. So, I'll try and talk loud. How about that? All right, well, as you guys know, I like to work off of notes, so hopefully it's not too distracting, but I can't remember what I ate at the time, so I just want to make sure I get all the information we want to talk about. So as it says, we're going to talk about traffic calming, some different measures and kind of the theory behind it. I'm not usually one to just read off of a slide, but I found two of them here that were really pointed and really covered the theory and what traffic calming is, so I'll read those and hopefully my reading is good as well. So traffic calming is a term that has emerged in Europe to describe a full range of methods to slow cars, but not necessarily to ban them. As they move through commercial and residential neighborhoods, the benefit for pedestrians and bicyclists is that cars now drive at speeds that are safer and more compatible to walking and bicycling. There's in fact a kind of equilibrium among all of those- to describe a full range of methods to slow cars, but not necessarily to ban them. As they move through commercial and residential neighborhoods, the benefit for pedestrians and bicyclists is that cars now drive at speeds that are safer and more compatible to walking and bicycling. There's, in fact, a kind of equilibrium among all of those uses of the street. So, no one mode can be dominated at the expense of the other. And so, as it indicates, traffic calming really initiated or started in the UK. And a lot of that has been carried over to the US. So, there's a second one. And this project for Public Spaces is a US company. So, they've been, they have a lot of information on this. So, in the last page, I have some of my references and you can go through there. There's a lot of great information. So, traffic calming is founded on the idea that streets should help create and preserve a sense of place, that their purpose is for people to walk, stroll, gaze, meet, play, shop, and even work alongside cars, but not be dominated by them. So, you'd really see this in a downtown commercial district-type setting where you have people that are, you know, scrolling, strolling between businesses. You may have on-street or parking garages and places. So, that is really, if you look at this and you look at downtown, that's kind of a great idea of what you're looking at. So, it's cheesy, but to calm or not to calm, right? So, again, we're trying to achieve an equitable balance between vehicles and other modes, walking and bicycles. Measures should not result in severely restricting traffic. The goal isn't to get vehicles off the road. We still need those vehicles, whether it's for, you know, residential use, going place to place, or it may be commercial deliveries such as downtown. All these businesses need deliveries. So, again, it's not to totally get rid of traffic. It's just to slow them down and provide a safer space. There are some potential risks associated with each type of traffic calming. One of those was surprising. I'll kind of cover a little bit later in these. Just unique situations that arise out of those, both politically and in a safety aspect. A lot of these you see, it can be used in residential neighborhoods, but a lot of it you see is on arterial collector-type streets or maybe streets that function as that. Because we have roads in town, we don't have a great arterial grid. And so, you have a lot of what would otherwise be deemed residential streets are actually functioning as a collector, some, maybe even a minor arterial. So, those are the areas you'd be looking at. You can do it in a residential street, but 75% of our network is residential. So, you're talking a large program for that. It'd be a lot of the cut-through and commercial-type. Cost, obviously, there's an upfront cost to complete a project. And then, there's an ongoing maintenance cost, a big part of this. And some of these are addressed in our regs, but depending on how far out we wanted to go, this could be addressed at the time of development. So, the roads are constructed that way. It's difficult to go in and retrofit something. You're pretty well limited at that point. And a lot of those, you see our roads where it's a mile-long straight road. There's not a lot you're going to do with that. You know, you may have speed humps or tables, that sort of thing. But those aren't necessarily always ideal. Again, I'll cover some of that as well. So, this is an example of a integrated traffic control or traffic calming plan. This was actually used in Oregon. I don't have the exact location, but this is what they drew up and how they were going to do it. And you can see, a lot of your cut-through traffic is pretty much eliminated in one form or another. So, it can be troublesome, especially when you're talking large wheel-based vehicles for deliveries, maybe sanitation trucks, whatever. You still have to be able to accommodate those vehicles and not create a hazard by trying to do a traffic calming measure. Again, you can see there are multiple measures. And we'll kind of talk through some of the basic ones. I didn't go into depth because there's all kinds of different theories. A big part of what you'll hear us talk about through here is we have adopted the MUTCD and there's some other governing criteria for us in roadway design. So, we need to follow those. MUTCD would be a big one for like signage and striping. You may see Ashtoe or others for actual roadway design. So, we have the three Es of traffic calming. Pretty basic way to not go backwards here. Let's try that. To keep them engineering. So, those are the physical changes, maybe visual changes, striping, signage, that sort of thing. And they're used to influence driver behavior. Could be bump outs, it could be signage, it could be striping. You guys have probably all driven through some sort of traffic calming measure and may or may not have realized it at the time. Again, engineering is handy because we can take care of that portion at the time of development. If we put those in our regs, if we want, you know, curvilinear roads or something to help with that, that's where the engineering portion comes in. Engineering's going to pay, play into anything we do because even when we go out and we do signage, you know, there's some engineering judgment that has to go with that as well. Education, this is a big component for any of this. I know our mayor starred in some videos, but those are the types of things we need to go out to. I know we have some, you know, no texting and driving, those sorts of, PSA's out on the radios, or radio, rather. And so, what we want to do is we want to remind the community of the importance of good driving behavior. I mean, in reality, it could be you, it could be me, it could be our family, it could be their family. You know, everybody's, everybody's safety's at stake with this. So, in that type of outreach, that's what you want to address. You want to bring it down to a personal level. We'll kind of go over that in a little bit, too. Enforcement, unfortunately, I'm sure that's a view more than one of us has seen. Not necessarily always the most well-accepted portion, but it is very important. It is a part of this. Not one of these systems works without the other, and enforcement is included in that. I mean, we could probably all agree, without guns and tasers or tickets at the very least, we would probably all have different driver behaviors. At least, I don't want to lump you into my category, but I know that for myself. So, engineering examples, you got raised medians, chicanes, lane narrowing, et cetera. I won't read them all to you, but there are a lot of different portions in here. Most of what you're seeing here are hard infrastructure items. They do make some temporary installations or retrofit installations. Talked to some different people, actually talked to some different cities and a couple towns on them, and specifically on the speed bumps. And they have some, they look cool, they're rubber, and, you know, you can go stake them into these neighborhoods. And I talked to a city south of Tucson, and they said, "Oh, yeah, they're awesome." Till the first car drags over it and then it's down the block, you know. So, there's no way to keep it in place. So, they moved away from those. So, let's talk about some not-engineering examples. Stop signs, stop signs always are probably one of the most requested. I don't want to say probably. They are the most requested sign that we have. And people are intending to use them as a traffic calming measure. It's actually not what they're intended for. They must meet warrants. So, when we go in, we can't just say, "Oh, we want a sign here." There's eight warrants that we have to meet a number of to actually be able to install that and meet the federal regs through the MUTCD. There are also some other things that go into that. Stop signs, four-way stops. They've actually, studies have found that speeds between those increase when drivers perceive them as unneeded. A lot of what you're going to hear is all about driver perception and how you feel about the road. As well, 30% of tort cases are actually a result of improper sign usage. So, going and putting a stop sign in the wrong place and it causes an issue, there've been lawsuits that have come back as a result of that. Another one that you see, and we have requested quite a bit, is children at play. The MUTCD at one time did support those. They've actually moved away from it because they found it gave parents, kids, drivers, a false sense of security. And studies found that they actually very quickly forgot about those signs. They're just in the background. I mean, we probably all drive by a sign that we've seen 100 times. We know what the speed limit is. If I changed it, you may not recognize it. You know what I mean? It wouldn't register because it's just a black-and-white sign. So, those are no longer supported by the MUTCD. So, raised medians. We talked about, you know, some expense. These are expensive. I know Stockton Hill was probably the last project they did medians on, and that was a pretty decent time ago. That can become a political issue as well. Businesses are very particular about driveways. Those driveways are gold to them, and being able to get people from any direction in and out of their business is really important. So, when you're looking at that, you know, those may be a lot of considerations you have. These are really important, actually, when you're talking, say, Stockton Hill. Part of moving traffic well on an arterial is to limit the amount of movement on and off of the roadway. And that's what these medians accomplish. So, you'll also see the one on the right that has the yellow centerline striping. That's a short raised median, but what that does is it narrows the road. And when you narrow a road, it tends to slow people down, just that driver's perception. And so, they can be used in a number of different ways. It could be pedestrian refuges, it could be just limited left turns, it could be for narrowing roads. There's a whole slew of things that they're used for. One of the things you do need to be careful with, and we're actually addressing it through a highway safety improvement grant on Stockton Hill, is left-turn offset. So, you guys have probably all made a left turn on where you have a median on both sides. It offsets the cars to where you're looking at the car ahead of you and you can't see around it safely. So, Burley, our project manager, has been highly successful in getting the H-SIP grants for us. And we've got, that is one that's in design right now. We've got a handful of others that'll be coming out and addressing some items. And one of those will be those medians on Stockton Hill.
Go ahead.
Lane narrowing, this is a big one. As we go through the Streetscape DCR, and we actually have an H-SIP grant that will do some of this, we are awarded eligibility for down on First Street. And so, you'll probably see some of these in design or in implementation pretty quickly. I think the courthouse may have some bump outs they're doing in front as part of their remodel, or I say remodel, brand-new building. And so, these come in a number of forms. It could be, like the one in the middle is a bump out for a mid-block crosswalk. It could be bump outs at the corners, chicanes, any number of physical changes in the roadway that are designed to slow people down. The tighter corner radiuses, you know, people don't go around the corner so quickly. It can be used in conjunction with one another. There's, they're used kind of universally. Couple concerns you have with these. One that we're going to, we're going to struggle with downtown that we know is drainage. Kingman is predominantly a surface carry for our stormwater, which presents some problems because when you put a bump out in it, it's kind of a dam when we have a crowned road. So, if you look actually out here on Fourth and Oak, it's a really good example of what it takes to fix a problem they had there and make it more compliant as far as ADA. We had to cut black, you know, probably 25% of the length of the block so that we can make the transition. So, they, the bump out, the little bit of concrete in the bump out isn't the entire picture. Sometimes, you've got a lot of distance to travel away from it to make your transitions, to get your grades and your drainage to work again. Vertical roadway changes, second, probably third-most requested. We get a lot of them for speed bumps in neighborhoods. Vertical roadway changes can include speed bumps, speed humps, speed tables. The one on the top-right side there is actually a raised section. It's supposed to be like a crosswalk. Raised intersections is on the top-left. So, there's a lot of different variations you can use in those. There are some real hazards that are associated with these. I didn't include it, but one of them I had was a motorcycle officer that was going down a road and hit a raised crosswalk and caused him to wreck. I had people were filming, I don't know, but they just happened to be there and wrecked his motorcycle. These are, I thought you would see everybody for it or everybody against it. It's kind of across the board. The agencies I've talked to, some of them use it. Some of them used to use vertical changes, and they says, "Ah, we don't like that." And they're backing out of them. Some people still use them in a really limited basis. So, one of those areas you've got to be careful with. The speed bumps, speed humps, tables, all those to be used on long, straight roads like in a residential neighborhood, they have to be about every 500 feet to be effective. And so, you know, it takes a lot of speed bumps, not just one, to fix the problem. In the same way as a four-way stop, they found that the speeds between the speed bumps actually increased because people slow down and then they got to make up that time. So, they're, you know, going a lot faster trying to make it to the next one to speed them, slow down, do it again. So, not that they can't be used, we just want to be really careful where we use them. And what we see a lot, too, is people aren't necessarily trying to slow the traffic down. They just don't want it on their road. So, if they put a speed bump, they know the person will go to the next road over. And we're just, we're relocating the problem. We're taking the problem from this street and we're moving it over. So, when you look at these, you've got to look at them in a bigger picture and make sure, okay, if I move it from this road, where are they going to go? And the goal would be, in potential situations, to reduce your cut-through traffic and get them back onto the arterials and collector roads. So, like I say, it will take a lot of evaluation to use them. Drainage can be an issue to a point. A lot of our surface conveyance for stormwater is in inverted roads. And so, you kind of got to, got to play with the speed bump or speed tables if we were going to go that route. It's pretty difficult. So, our neighbors, Mojave County, I spoke to them as well. They actually have a traffic calming policy that they have in place. And they actually strictly prohibit any type of vertical roadway changes. That's for a number of reasons. One of the biggest they cite was due to EMS response. You know, it's, it's a slowdown time. I've read it, there's a lot of different averages. They say about 10 seconds per device for a responding unit, which if it's every 500 feet for a long road could make a pretty significant difference. As well, there's some patient care and concerns for people that may have a spinal issues or some type of health issues that they're being slammed over these things. So, they actually don't use them. Couple things that I found in doing some research that I was surprised in to share with you guys is we know that they generate additional noise and pollution. They found a 20 to 30 decibel noise increase in the vicinity of a speed bump. And that's mostly generated due to people slowing down and speeding up. And then, if you drive an old jalopy like I do and I drive over it, it sounds like a cowbell going. So, there's a lot of noise. But what I found unique or kind of surprising, there was a study in the UK that contributed 25,000 deaths a year as a result of speed humps, speed bumps, speed tables. And I thought people having accidents or that sort of thing. It was actually, and take it for what it's worth, but they were contributing it to the additional emissions output as a result of those. It increased the emissions so much that they were contributing it to, you know, high mortality rates and infants and different things. I've seen some of those studies here. I don't know how you quantify those numbers, but it is something that's kind of eyebrow-raising to look at that. Somebody at least maybe had an agenda but looked at those. And I don't know the exact numbers that they came up with, the increased carbon footprint as a result of them, but it's kind of a unique study. Speed feedback signs. You'll get to see a couple of these in town as well. Right now, again, we're still in design. Probably the top-left one there says 35 miles an hour. So, they're set with a predetermined speed. If you're going over it, it's going to start flashing at you. Mojave County got an H-SIP grant as well, and they've done some of them. I think Northern, maybe Castle Rock, they have a handful of them around town and in the county in general. So, like I say, these will be, these will be part of that H-SIP project that Burley got as well. So, we have some going on Stockton Hill. I'll preface this by saying I am partial to orange, but this is actually mostly the type of education parts I could bring back. I didn't download the WACOG or the MPO from Havasu, but you guys are all aware of that one. So, a big part of this is actually educating the drivers to, again, the reason we want to drive safe, not just because you're going to get a ticket, but it's your friends, your family, you know, the people you know, not only them, but your own safety is at stake with unsafe driving habits. And so, that type of public outreach, reminding people, "Hey, you're in a neighborhood, slow down." Stop at stop signs. Use your turn signal. You know, those seem pretty insignificant, but how many crashes are a result of inattentiveness or, you know, speeding? Or what is the severity of the crash due to speeding versus if somebody were actually doing a speed limit? This is area, honestly, I think that we, including Public Works, could probably add into and provide some additional outreach. There are national programs like these you're looking at that are National Work Zone Safety and Distracted Driving Weeks. Those are national programs, and these are some of the signs that you see down from those. The one on the top-left is unique in that. That one is, and you guys have probably seen them when you're driving in other states. They have "Slow down, my mommy works here, my daddy works here." And they bring those down to a personal level. You know, this is not just a road cone that you're going to run over. It's a person. They have a family, they have a life. You know, that is what you're trying to do. Or not just, it's not a road cone you're going to run over. The person in the car next to you has a family, has a life. So, trying to bring it to a personal level. The last, least, probably liked portion, again, is the enforcement, but it is, it is a vital part of a traffic calming. Well, just good driving habits in general, but even part of a traffic calming. The traffic calming won't solve everything on its own. Oftentimes, complaints are received in areas that are well-signed. I know you've probably all seen people speeding as they're going by a speed limit sign. Or my pet peeve, somebody drives through my road-close sign into my closure. You know, sometimes, that's a local closure and we're letting local traffic in and out. But sometimes, we have a hard closure and people are very set in their ways. They don't want to go three minutes out of the way to get where they're going. And, "Oh, I go this way all the time." Yeah, but now, we've got a six-foot. Yeah, but now we got a six-foot trench across the road. It's gonna be a little more difficult. Not that it's impossible, but you better speed up. You know, those sorts of things. A study by Stuart Greer found that the number of tickets is kind of proportionate to the severity of accidents. So as the number of tickets goes up, the number and severity of traffic accidents actually go down. The problem has, is that those are short-lived. So if you do a targeted enforcement in one area and then you leave in a short time, those driver behaviors revert back to what they used to be and now you have that unsafe driving habit again. And so as the picture shows, some of those are targeted. One that I thought was kind of neat, and KPD may do this already, I forget which agency it is. They have a heat map essentially, and that's how they determine, okay, this is our highest accident area. This is the highest area for DUI, this is the highest accident or crime rate. And then they use that to direct some of their target-driven enforcement. Again, probably the least liked portion of this because everybody wants to drive 100 miles an hour, but it's, it's one of the most important pieces. And now the last part is cost. Cost range on a number of factors, like we talked about drainage, could be the size of the road, where we're at, the type of measure. You know, a speed table is gonna be a lot different than going in and constructing actual bump outs. Or, you know, a brain just shut off on me. A narrowed roadway, sorry. A single measure can range from roughly $2,000. Now keep in mind that 2,000 would be staking retrofit rubber mats that the other guy said they end up dragging down the road. I've seen a lot of places though that they use those. If they're gonna go put in a median, they'll put in a rubber median first and they'll try it. Same way with traffic circles, because if they don't like it, if they need to go back and they decide, oh, man, this thing caused more issues than it solved, they can pull it out pretty easily, then they can rethink it, redesign it, and then install it in the field. And it gives them a test bed before they go in and they build something out of concrete and then decide, oh, man, this was a terrible idea. So they still have their use for a number of areas and they're, they're actually pretty neat.
Jack, need to wrap up in two minutes.
Okay, sorry. So we're about there. Communities have different methods of paying for them. Sometimes they do something similar to an improvement district where the residents in that area of influence, call it, actually pay for the improvements. And it takes some of the same work as an improvement district would as far as signatures and agreement between a majority of the residents. Some agencies, again, have actually limited or just completely restricted certain traffic calming measures. A lot of them don't have anything that they've adopted. And on the cost side, going back to the development world, if we wanted to go through some of these, it would be best to address those in the development side. That way they're actually constructed up front and they're built into our system rather than trying to go back and retrofit those. And with that, questions?
Any comments, questions? Counselor Staley?
Thanks, Jack. This is one of the things that I had asked about. And I, you know, I think about streets like Willow between Airway and Keno that were never supposed to be that heavily traveled, but they became that way over time. And then you have all these houses that, that face Willow. And so I brought this up because I'd like to be able to see the city address those types of streets to make them safer and ones where, you know, people are already living there and then all of a sudden their street just isn't as safe anymore. And people drive really fast along Willow right there. And then I asked, you know, there's streets like Burbank between Beverly and Airway where we have Centennial Park and, and on the weekends, people are parking across the street in the dirt and then going across. But because it's such a straight shot and there's no center lane or anything, you, you see people driving really fast and it's unsafe. You have, I always see older people that are at the library, but they park across the street by Centennial and I'm always worried they're not gonna make it, you know, because traffic, they're going too fast. And so I'd like to be able to see the city look at streets like that, the heavily used ones, and slow people down on them, but also to allow neighborhoods to have the ability, just like if you want to have your street paved, you come together and you, you make the improvement district and then you put those in. I was in Scottsdale and there was a, there was a neighborhood where they, they had the raised medians just along the center. They had a couple of them with the tree in the middle and, and some curbs. It couldn't have cost that much, but you, you, as you approached them, you had to go around. They were, they were like diamond shaped. And so it really made their neighborhood safer. And I'm sure that people didn't take those streets as a way of getting around Stockton Hill or, you know, whatever busy street that they had next to it. And the other thing I wanted to bring up that, that didn't come up in your presentation, in Cottonwood, in their downtown area, they just have movable traffic signs that aren't very big, but they tell you to slow down and to stop for pedestrians that are crossing through their downtown. And they're really effective. I've sat and watched them for a while and I don't know if they take them out at night or they just leave them there until, you know, they need to be replaced or till they disappear. But they're not very expensive because they're just a regular movable traffic control sign that tells you to stop. And, and they put it right in the center of this, the downtown street. And there's several of them. So as you're coming through, people are more aware of the pedestrians crossing and they definitely slow down.
Yeah, some of those, going back to the, the children at play type signs, you have to be careful with because if they're not supported by MUTCD, it opens us up to a point. It doesn't mean that you can't use things that are outside of there, but there's a lot of work that goes into getting to that point. And unfortunately, in times, we do see people use signage. And I'm not, I'm not aware of Cottonwood. It's definitely something I'll look at and see what they use that use signage improperly. And Carl would probably attest to it when you go to the courthouse. There's some hard questions you gotta answer as to why, what documentation you had. So we want to be careful in that, but there are things that we can look at in those areas. Another item with that is, is pushing people across crosswalks or uncontrolled areas where there is no crosswalk would be something.
Right. Yeah, these are, they have, these are at their crosswalks. They have quite a few of them at every.
I'm going to have to bring this discussion to a close. I'm sorry. Because if anyone had any other comments, actually, I did, but I'll save it for another time. And because we're getting very close. But that was very informative. I think we need, we need to just honor Counselor Staley's request, look at Cottonwood and other areas. But we do need calming, calming measures in Kingman.
We do.
At several places, and I totally concur about Willow. So thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
And I'm going to call this meeting to order and we will reconvene in just about two minutes. I mean, I'm adjourning this meeting. I mean, really, I'm adjourning this meeting. And I'm about to call to order another. Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City of Kingman Common Council to order on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingenvelter?
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Dennis Cronkright of the College Park Baptist Church. And would you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, will you join me, please, as we seek the Lord? Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for opportunities to seek you and together as folks involved in our city. We thank you for those who are serving, the council, mayor, and other responsibilities here. We're grateful for each one who's willing to make sacrifices to represent important things and the needs in our community. So we thank you for all these things. And Father, we want to thank you for each day that you give us life and breath, the beat of our hearts, the breath that fills our lungs, all appointed by you. So we're grateful. And we're grateful for our fair town that you've allowed us to live in, for all of those who make it a better place because of their sacrifices, their work, their efforts. So we're very grateful tonight. And then as we gather to make decisions, to listen to viewpoints, we pray, Father, that you would superintend over everything that transpires here in this meeting and all the decisions that would be made. We pray, Father, your direction, that that which would be done would be things that would better our, our community, that would cause us to be more of what we ought to be and need to be for safety and for things that would watch over us in a good way. So we thank you for your superintendency over each of our lives and our community. And we pray your blessing now upon that which transpires this evening, that it might honor the great God of heaven, for we pray it in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Our first order of business this evening will be appointments. And these will be Building Board of Appeals appointments. The Building Board of Appeals consists of seven members and currently has six vacancies. Through a recruiting effort, we have received four interested applicants, which would put the board membership at five members. This would be enough for a quorum and to conduct business. The interested applicants received are as follows. Paul Shuffler, Rex Rouge, Pat Jarouche, and John Kirby. Staff recommends appointing each of the applicants to serve one term. Are any of the applicants here this evening? Hi, John. Would you like to address the council?
Thank Chris for offering me this opportunity. I've volunteered at the city, for the city, in a couple of different capacities over the years. Haven't done so in some time, but this board is attractive to me because the time commitment is fairly small. So that, that is something I'm excited to get back and help, but I'd have to dedicate a tremendous amount of time, which I just don't have because of my work career at the moment. Thank you for your consideration.
We really appreciate your application. And while the time commitment is small, the applicants for this position have very good applications and experience and expertise. So thank you very much for your application. Is there any discussion among the council? Any comments, questions? Do we have the, well, there is no liaison to this council, is there? Okay, then I would entertain a motion. Do we have to do these individual, Mr. Cooper? Or do we have to do them?
You can do them all in.
I would entertain a motion to appoint all of them or if you'd rather appoint them one by one, I would entertain that motion to the Building Board of Appeals.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Shuffler, Mr. Rouge, Mr. Jarouche, and Mr. Kirby to the Building Board of Appeals.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to appoint all four of the applicants to the Building Board of Appeals. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Second order of business is called to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. With the exception of those on the consent agenda, there will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no more than three minutes. I have one person signed up for the call to the public, and that is Mr. Bill McCabe. Mr. McCabe?
Good evening, council. First off, I'd like to thank all of you for pointing an ADA dedicated person at the last council and talking about self-evaluation. I like to throw my name in there when you go to look for self-evaluation. Topic I was gonna talk about tonight is a previous one I talked about. 2012 International Building Code. It talks about the duties and powers of the building official. It's basically, the building official is hereby authorized and directed to enforce the provisions of this code. And then that's in Section 104.1, 104.3, Notice and Orders. The business officials shall issue all necessary notices or orders ensuring compliance to this code. And when I talk about this code, I brought it up before, we're talking the 2012 International Building Code. They refer to it. And then in Chapter 11, 1103, it says, existing buildings, existing buildings shall comply with Section 3411. Jumping over to Section 114, Notice of Violation. Building official is authorized to serve a notice of violations of order on persons responsible for erection, construction, alterations, extension, repair, moving, removing, demolition, or occupancy of building or structure in the violations of provisions of this code. or occupancy of building or structure in the violations of provisions of this code. 3411.2 is the maintenance of facilities. A facility that is constructed or altered to be accessible shall be maintained accessible during the occupancy. And where I'm getting with this is, there's a lot of buildings that the owners aren't maintaining, parking lots, which makes it tough to walk across. And the handicapped parking spots, they're all faded out. You can't really tell if they're a handicapped parking spot or not. Well, the walkway from the handicapped parking spot is part of the path to travel. It's supposed to maintain and be smooth. It's-- a lot of them are. There's a lot that are resealed, but just that I run across that is difficult because you get more than a quarter inch and the feet kind of stumble. You know, mine gets up on a rock and it trips me. Wheelchairs have a difficult time.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
Thank you for your time.
We have no other people signed up for call to the public? Let's move on then to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Would any of the council like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for Since no one has removed any items, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
There, I'll move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Dan.
We have a motion and a second to approve all items in the consent agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. That was a long consent agenda. We have no old business, and so we will move on to new business. Municipal court job classification changes. The Kingman Municipal Court is requesting to change the classifications of two of its court clerk positions to those of judicial assistant and courtroom clerk. The courtroom clerk carries additional responsibilities and duties above and beyond a court clerk, and the judicial assistant carries additional duties and responsibilities above and beyond both a court clerk and the courtroom clerk. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of our rules, as we-- when we want to take an employee and give them a new title that may not exist within the system, we have to bring it to the council. So this is really just our responsibility to come and ask for permission. We have two employees that are operating within the court system now that have been asked to do a number of additional duties. They're not being recognized for that with title or with the right pay grade. And so what we wanted to do is bring this to you. In conversations with Judge Singer, these two employees are dedicated, they're qualified to do more, they are doing more. I mean, that's really the reality, is that they're being asked to do this additional work without the proper recognition. So that's really the effort that we're making to get these folks classified correctly and paid correctly on the right step. And so that's really what we have for you. I've asked Judge Singer if there's questions about the duties that they're being asked to do. He's here in which to outline those. If there was questions, I can tell you in visiting with him that it is clear that the court clerk positions clearly do not fit what we're asking these two individuals to do. So if you'd like to hear from the judge, he is here. If not, that's really what we have for you. It's not complicated, it's just-- and I would put in the bookmark that this is something that normally we would handle during the budget process in building the budget and working through employee titles and changes. These two positions just were missed. The judge understands that this will be a slight increase in his budget. He feels like he can take this additional expenditure on with his employees, which that's fine by me. So we're, of course, I'm recommending that these titles be changed. I think they're justified, so.
I have one question. Has there been a desk audit? Are these job descriptions updated? Do we have new job descriptions for these positions?
Yes, we attached them to the agenda, and I listed in there the job descriptions of the court clerk, and then the additional job description for the courtroom clerk, and then the additional job descriptions for the judicial assistant. They sort of build upon each other. The courtroom clerk and the judicial assistant still do all the duties of the court clerk, but the courtroom clerk does more than the court clerk and judicial assistant does the responsibilities of the court clerk and the courtroom clerk.
Okay. So these people are already in place, but this is a step up in their job descriptions?
Correct.
Okay.
Things they're pretty much already doing now, so. And I've been asked by my fellow department heads, they requested, since I don't come very often, that I speak for about two, two and a half hours. But I want to start with the history of courts here in this country and then go to Arizona.
And we just about have it for you tonight, Judge Singer. We've got plenty of time. Any questions or comments? Any further questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, counselor?
I just want to make note that, like Manager Foggan said, in the backup, the court is able to absorb the salary adjustment within the current budget, so. And thank you for all the good that comes out of your court. I'm sure those ladies work really hard. Thank you.
They do. You've got a great staff over there.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion of the council? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the municipal court job classification changes.
I'll make a motion to make those changes to the municipal court positions.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, and Councilwoman Mello Keener seconded, and all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. And thank you again, Judge Singer, and please convey our regards to them. Next order of business, are there any announcements by the mayor, council members, city manager, limited to announcements, board and commission? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot department reports. Do we have it?
No.
I didn't think we had them. Okay. So our announcements are limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars. And I will start with you, Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I have several things to bring up for thought tonight. And the first one is that I want to just let you all know, as well as the public know, that we've added a Census 2020 Complete Count webpage to our website. And so all the kind of frequently asked questions, deadlines, calendar, all of that stuff's on there. We're continually looking to provide education on the census. So we've been trying to share census information with service groups and other groups that have been willing to let us come and visit with them. But just wanted to let you know that that webpage is up. It has links to the 2020 census information that the feds have up, really a lot of good information. And as committed, I will have a report on something that we're doing new every time we meet. So that's the newest thing. Just to let you know, we have a-- our task force is going around meeting with our individual department teams and walking them through the census and the importance of it. And so we're doing our best to educate our employees, because we know that they will go home, talk to neighbors, talk to friends, family about being counted as well. So that's my 2020 census update for tonight. The other piece that I'd like to cover is just the necessity, especially during this time of year, to donate to the food bank. Our food bank is in desperate need of donations, whether that is in food or money-wise. And just want to let you know that in conversations with the food bank director, we are going to have food collection barrels at some of our public locations, and I'm going to challenge our employees to be involved and make the food bank a much better place for people through the holidays. And hopefully, we can continue that effort into the next year. So just wanted to let everybody know that the food bank is desperate for donations. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mayor. I know I passed up my spot, but Carl saved me before someone else started speaking. Citizen survey. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that our annual citizen survey is going out again this year in mail format. People should start receiving that next week. We really-- it is legitimate, and we are the ones behind it. It's a written survey that's being mailed to 1,800 randomly selected homes within the city limits, and we are encouraging anybody and all that get the survey to take that and send it back in. As a follow-up to that, we will, again, like we did last year, offer that survey online after the paper surveys are collected. And we will obviously be looking at-- the one that's online won't be scientific in nature, but we obviously look at those results as well, just to see if there's a theme that we can catch. So there's that piece. And then continuing on with the surveying, the polling that we've talked about will start also next week. That will not be a written or a paper survey, that will be calls. Randomly selected phone numbers within our city boundaries will be asked about property taxes and about whether that would be something they would support into the future. And so-- but those will be phone calls, and they're hoping to talk to approximately 380 people. So the number of calls that they'll be making, do not know. They'll call until they get the required number of responses they need. So both legitimate, both being sponsored by the city. And then that is all I have.
That's a lot. Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing the results of those surveys. For the written survey, what is the timeframe for which people? Mr. Cooper?
I know.
About three weeks.
Three weeks. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Counselor Watkins?
I know.
I'm passing you, Mr. Cooper. Counselor Wade?
I know.
Counselor Scott Staley?
Yeah, I'd just like to let everybody know that the Airport Commission meeting has been canceled for the month of November.
All right.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Last month, I went down to Tucson and I attended the 2019 Arizona Rural Transportation Conference. That was an excellent program. As we heard from Bennett and Gary, our target industries are transportation, distribution, logistics, warehousing. They had a whole line of classes related to trade. I met a gentleman by the name of Juan Siscomani, who's senior advisor for the governor for regional and international affairs, international trade. Spoke to him about Kingman and all the wonderful things that we're doing, said that we wanted to start a conversation with them. I know that they've been in touch with us. Manager Foggan, I think you're going to be working with Juan and his staff to arrange a visit for them to come up to Kingman, to see all the things that we're doing, and just looking to the future and to strengthen Kingman's, you know, strategic importance to the state of Arizona, and to continue on that path towards being a regional hub for northwestern Arizona. You know, I'm excited to get them up here and see where we can strengthen our partnerships with them. So that was a really exciting trip. And just to hear about all of the things that are coming up in workforce development and trade, you know, in all our target industries, just what the future holds with automation and all these wonderful things, it's really interesting. So we have opportunities to position Kingman. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mello Keener?
I have a few things, maybe more than Manager Foggan. I just wanted to let everybody know that Mojave County is going to do a sex trafficking presentation. Sex trafficking of children and youth is a growing concern in Arizona and nationally. And they're going to be having their meeting November 21st in the Board of Supervisors Auditorium at 9:00 AM. So I hope everybody can attend that. Also, I wanted to talk about the good things happening at the golf course, Disc Golf. It's the new craze, right, Mike? Anyways, I guess we had 25 people playing Disc Golf this last Sunday. If you're walking 18 holes, it's $6. If you're riding in a golf cart, 18 holes, it's $15. And it's open after 2:00, every day after 2:00. We'll check out Disc Golf. And then the Katherine Heinrich Center is having their annual Harvest Moon Tea Party. That's November 8th, from 1:00 to 3:00. It's $6.50 a person. They're going to have local artists and desserts and tea sandwiches. I'm going. I'm going to go and support that and check that out. So I hope some people can join with that. And lastly, I just wanted to let everyone know that Mojave County is now passed a resolution making our county a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Congressman Gosar, Senator Borelli, and State Representative Leovia Suchi were all there in support of it, and just so everyone's aware of that. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Nelson?
Okay. Well, I have a few things. First of all, since I see Mr. Kirkham here, I especially want to thank the Route 66 Cruisers for the Halloween event for the youth and families downtown on Halloween night. It was-- it's a big event every year, and I know they fundraise all year to buy the candy for those. I think there are thousands of people that go through that and get candy from Cool Cars. Huh? 3,200. They get candy from Cool Cars, that's how I put it. And so thank you for that. I did attend a meeting last week regarding the Amtrak Southwest Chief, our passenger service that stops here. But this is part of a national passenger train system that is in this country and apparently is at risk, at least our part of it is at risk. And so there's a lot of advocacy for it, and what we are going to do as a city is have a resolution come to council on the 19th for your consideration, in which we will support the continuation of the Southwest Chief. And then we would be able to use that to send to our legislators, and both at the state and federal levels, because this is a federally subsidized program, but it's one that I think is important for our particular city. I also was able to attend a Chief 60 Arizona, which was an event at the college, and it was really a great educational goal set. This is a statewide goal, but we're doing it locally. We're setting local goals that 60% of those, of our citizens in our region and in Arizona would have achieved a certificate or credential or a degree by 2035. And actually, that is a very sizable goal. I hate to say that, but it is. But we are definitely working together as a community with community leaders and educators, all coming together to support this and to work together toward it. And as part of that, at the Tri-City Council in January 8th, I just want to mark your calendars, we are going to have Evelyn Kasuga from the Center for Arizona's Future be at that meeting here in Kingman, and she'll be discussing progress meters for the state. And again, these are kind of state goals, but we set them individually. We kind of pick and choose what makes sense for us regionally and work on it. And it could be jobs, it's education, it could be civic engagement. They're about six or seven meters. So it's going to be an interesting discussion, and I would-- it is a public meeting, and so anyone that's interested in this, put that on your calendar. And the Veterans Parade is this Saturday, and it starts at, I think, Fifth and Beale, and it will be starting at 10 o'clock, I think. Pardon? It's-- those of us that are going to be in it, be there at 9:00. And others, I think, can be there at 10:00. So-- So, that's what's on my, my agenda, so. Is there, I guess there's no further discussion, I've lost my agenda. There we go. Counsel, okay, next order of business, council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. We have our work session calendar distributed to us. Are there any requests for additional items or calendar adjustments?
I have one there.
Okay.
I'd actually like for us to look at, Ron, and Mike, the, speaking of the Disc Golf, we have a beautiful Disc Golf course at Fireman's Park that was actually created many, many years ago by private parties that came in and actually worked with the city and put it in. And since we've got all the new great equipment for the kids, and then nobody wants that to go anywhere, because we want that for the kids, but now, that course has actually been messed up for the Disc Golf that goes on there. And that's a free area for Disc Golf. So, that's a beautiful place for people to learn Disc Golf and not have to pay for anything. And, and Disc Golf is a, is a big sport in this community, it really, really is. So I would like for us to look at, whether a work session or an agenda item, of what can we do to fix that, that course for them? Please and thank you.
Thank you. Anything, any other items? Okay. Given that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meetings adjourn.